Okay, this is the new organizers of our paper class being at our school. And this is one of four after-school performance groups that we have. We have cherry pickers, we have a full string orchestra, which is the only one actually in Clay County of all the schools that has a string orchestra. And then we have a chorus and a dance club. Yesterday we had a great event at our school, uh, with our dance club. So, um, our next song is "What Will You Do With A Sea-Sick Sailor." And we did this at our Veterans Day program. We're gonna tell big ones. One, two, three.
(singing) What shall we do with the sea-sick sailor? What shall we do with the sea-sick sailor? What shall we do with the sea-sick sailor early in the morning? Eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises early in the morning. What shall we do with the walleye sailor? What shall we do with the walleye sailor? What shall we do with the walleye sailor early in the morning? Eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises early in the morning. (singing) We dance with the sea-sick sailor. We dance with the sea-sick sailor. We dance with the sea-sick sailor early in the morning. Eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises, eh-oh, when up she rises early in the morning.
Um, so we're now gonna have one of our finest guitars step to the mic and, uh, his name might be familiar to you. And this is our, uh, Mr. Witten, uh, Walker Witten. And he's gonna play, uh, a song called "Microry Velocity." And now we're gonna go back to a little bit of Christmas. Yeah, okay. This, uh, this is a funny song for all of you and, uh, I'd be very disappointed if you don't chime in and sing along with us on this.
(singing) Dashing through the snow, in a one-horse open sleigh. For the fields we go, laughing all the way. The thunder, the breeze, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, sing and say it from the top. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And soon as that ride was finished by night-time, the horse was seen at length. With fortunes in the sky, we went into a dented blanket and we got up high. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Hey, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much and thank you guys for inviting us to come and perform. I wanna recognize our kids real quick. And first I wanna ask, kids, any of y'all take lessons before you came to WE Cherry? Anybody? No? They all learned it at WE Cherry. So, kids, when I call your name, just raise your hand so you can be recognized. Dagny Smith. Phaedra Smith. Mallory Poole. Tristan Smith. Alicia Harrison. Aiden Ramirez. Cherylissa Alcinius. Venus, Phoenix Ricketts. Zoe Miller. Allison Polito. Jose Panegas. And of course, Walker Witten. So, thank you.
Ms. Witten, I, I wanna thank you and the cherry pickers for coming this evening. It just feels nice to have kids in front of everything that we do and let's give them a round of applause again. Great job. Thank you. Mr. Murch, thank you for what you do. I totally understand your great teacher at heart because you've involved everyone here this evening. So if anybody ever walks in those classrooms, be ready to learn, be ready to be engaged. And Uncle John, thank you as well. We have any parents here of the, of the cherry pickers? Please stand up. Thank you again for everything that you're doing for your kids. And thank you for trusting Clay County. Thank you again, Ms. Witten. Have a good evening.
So jokes. Michael. Yeah. Your mic's off. Can't hear you singing.
Janice, you might tell him that there's a few seats free up there.
Well, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. There's a few seats up in the front if anybody'd like to come and sit down. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Ryan Ritzman from Crossroads Lutheran Church to please come and say the invocation. Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. If you bow your heads and pray with me now. Heavenly Father, God Almighty, Creator of heaven and earth, thank you, Lord, for this day that we could enjoy once more your gift of life. Thank you for this opportunity to come together that we might serve all of the people of this county. Send your spirit here that we might feel your presence and know your will, that we might be blessings to all outside these walls. Thank you, Lord, for all of those who serve this county. Bless them. Send your spirit to them that they might know you, know your will, and be for you your hands and feet. Thank you for all the ways in which you've blessed us this season, this life, this county, this America. All of this, we pray in your son, Jesus. Amen. If you would rise with me now, take off your hats and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Ritzman. Thank you, Pastor Ritzman, for doing that. We appreciate it. At this time, I will call to order the, um, December fifteenth, twenty sixteen, school board meeting. I was told to hit it like I mean it. So, um, we'd like to welcome you, the citizens of Clay County, and take this opportunity to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to attend tonight's school board meeting. This meeting is our opportunity as your elected representatives to collaborate openly and make decisions that will decide the future direction of our public schools and the education of our children in Clay County. If you wish to address the board, there will be an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please fill out a card, which you will find located in the back of the room, indicating the specific item number or topic you wish to speak about, and turn it in promptly. No additional cards will be accepted once the board moves to the discussion agenda. Your participation is welcomed and appreciated. At this time, we have some recognitions and awards. Uh, our first one is the Founder's Week Art Contest winners, Ms. Kelly Watts. Would you like to come up? Thank you. Kelly is our K-12 Social Studies Curriculum Specialist.
All right. Good evening. Um, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize some of the young artists of Clay County schools. As you may recall, we celebrated Founder's Week the last week of September this year. This year seemed centered around the role of the presidency in our American democracy. During this week, multidisciplinary activities took place in classrooms across all forty-one schools, many in conjunction with our community partners. Before I introduce these young artists, I'd like to share some of the highlights with you.
(singing) We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom at its hour of maximum danger. I do not shrink from this responsibility. I welcome it. I do not believe that any of us would exchange places with any other people or any other generation.
(singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
USA rocks!
How good and pleasant it is when we're close together in unity!
Thank you. One of the district activities that took place that week was a K-five art contest. After learning about the different presidents, students had the opportunity to think about how they would improve our world and our country if they were president. They then illustrated their ideas. Each school then submitted one piece of artwork per grade level. A district panel narrowed it down to one piece of artwork per grade level. They are now hanging in our back case, which you can see on the back wall. Uh, the panel was very impressed with the students' creativity and their overall introspection. So, let's go ahead and meet some of these young artists tonight. And I will say, I know not all of them could make it tonight because it's just a busy evening with holiday activities at the schools. All right. So, um, in kindergarten was Ellen Morrison, and she comes to us from Coppergate Elementary. And here is Ms. Ellen's. All right. All right, in second, in first grade, excuse me, was Isla Richardson, who said, "If I were president, I would give money to the poor because they were so poor, I wanted to help them live." All right. In second grade was Lauren Diggs, and Lauren is at Fleming Island Elementary. And she said, "If I were president, I would stop people from fighting because we do not wanna go to war." All right. Ms. Lauren, is she here tonight? Yes, she is. All right. Third grade, Caitlin Chris from Tines Elementary, said, "If I were president, I would help citizens get equal rights, keep America clean, and keep citizens safe because there should be equal rights. Keep citizens safe and keep America clean." All right. Caitlin Chris. All right. Fourth grade, we'll stick that one back here. Fourth grade, Miley Godwin. So, in thinking about what she would do if she were president, she said she would, "If I were president, I would give a speech that everyone is the same, no matter what their skin color is, because no one should be treated different for the color of their skin." And Ms. Annie Leach, also from Clay Hill Elementary, is not able to be with us tonight. She is attending a choir ceremony at Clay Hill. But Annie said that if she were president, I would communicate with children, teens and adults, to have better life plans because the better our people, the better our country. And I think that's something we can all agree with. Congratulations to all of the artists who participated, to all the teachers who work so hard, and the schools, and the administrators who supported it. It was a very successful week, and, uh, we greatly appreciate these students and their big plans and big ideas, and we're right here behind you. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. That was wonderful.
Good evening.
All right. At this time, we have Ms. Terry Roth, our Director of ESC, and you're going to recognize...
I am proud to be able to recognize Ms. Amy Bachelor, who is trying to hide behind me, I might add. She is the recipient of the two thousand and sixteen Florida Council for Children with Behavior Disorders Eleanor Gutslo Outstanding Service Award. Ms. Bachelor was selected for this award by the Florida Council for Exceptional Children. Um, she was chosen based on her continuous service to students with emotional and behavioral disabilities and for the tremendous outcomes that she achieves with these students throughout the years. She began her career as an assistant with us in one of our classes for students with emotional and behavioral disabilities. She went back and got her teaching credential to become an ESC teacher and began with us in two thousand and nine as a teacher at Swinney-Pen Creek Elementary School. Um, she had a very nurturing environment in her classroom. Eventually, she did, however, transfer to the junior high school, and that is where she has really found her true niche and her passion for working with our youngsters. And she's currently employed at Lake Asbury Junior High and is also a teacher for students who are working on their GED. Um, she excels in the classroom, she has fabulous rapport with her youngsters, and really is a support to the other students on campus. Um, she is also, and she tries to keep this quiet, she has also been, um, piloting a program that's a very comprehensive social skills program with the University of Florida. So, Ms., um, Bachelor has a master's degree in exceptionalities and elementary ed from the University of West Florida. And please join us in recognizing Ms. Bachelor for her contributions to students with disabilities in Clay County.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, would you go down? Liz? Ms. Crane? Ms. Crane, could you get your camera and take pictures for us tonight? Thank you, Ms. Roth. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Wingate and Mr. Pittman to come up and recognize Fleming Island High School's swim team. Mr. Davis, why don't you just stay down there?
All right. I'm here. I'm Tom Pittman, Principal of Fleming Island High School. And just, uh, I'm gonna take up a couple, just a couple minutes of time, but, uh, these four young men, uh, there's approximately five hundred high schools in the state of Florida that compete in swimming. Uh, they compete in 4A, which is the highest level of swimming, and there's approximately a hundred and twenty teams that compete at, for that level here in the state of Florida. This group of boys, they start off, the way it works is you have a swim team, you compete during the regular season, you move on to districts. So many swimmers qualify because of times moving on to regionals. They continue to move on from regionals into state, and these four young men, uh, represented Fleming Island High School at the state meet. Um, and when you get to state, a lot of the teams that compete, uh, down there are have ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen swimmers competing for their teams, and that's how their teams rank so high. But these four guys took on all of those teams that were down there and earned enough points in all of their events to finish second in the state out of a hundred and twenty in 4A. So, they were, they were up on the podium, and they get four of them, and the team that won it had thirteen. So, um, but just to give you a few things of what they did do, they are back-to-back state champions. Uh, they had the bullseye on their back and the, uh, that would be the boys' two-hundred freestyle relay. So, for all of you that swim, that's a twenty-five meter pool, so each of them had to go down and back one time. And, uh, they, they completed that in a minute and twenty-four seconds to win the state title. That's an automatic All-American time for them. Hold on. It stinks getting old. They also finished second in the four-hundred meter relay, so they each had to swim four legs, and they also received an All-American time of three minutes and six seconds. Then, uh, the next one, Nick Hackett, who is a junior here, um, raise your hand, Nick. He won, he won the individual state title in the two-hundred freelay, relay with an All-American consideration time and school record of one thirty-nine. He also won the hundred, uh, butterfly All-American time in forty-eight eighty-eight. So, that's, uh, four laps and, so that's twelve seconds going down the pool and back doing the butterfly. Um, the, Jack Neely, raise your hand, Jack. He was second in the state in the fifty freestyle. Um, John Hutton, our lone senior, uh, he was third in the two-hundred IM with an All-American time of one fifty, and fourth in the hundred breaststroke. And then Drew Heighton, our lone sophomore, was fourth in the fifty freestyle and seventh in the hundred freestyle. So, they finished state, they represented Clay County well, they represented Fleming Island well, and the, the one thing I will say about them, they put so much time and effort into their swimming. They all swim on club teams and all that, but they, they love to represent Fleming Island High School. But as a principal, um, I'm proud to say that they have a combined, they can not only do it in the pool, but they can do it in the classroom, and these four young, young men combined have a three-point-eight GPA overall between the two of them.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. There's one more, Mr. Davis. You can hang out down there. Um, at this time, Ms. Karen Robinson, our Instructional Media Specialist, will recognize our state Jim Harbin Student Media Festival winners.
I brought my crew with me. Good evening, everyone. This is really an exciting evening tonight, so I'm glad we could be here. Um, as you said, I'm Karen Robinson. I am the Instructional Media Services Specialist from the Instructional Resources Department. Joining me are Dr. Sandy Joining me are Dr. Sandy Rokan, Supervisor of Instructional Resources, and the School Media Specialist attending tonight's school board meeting as we come together to honor our media festival honorees. The Annual Fame Conference is always an exciting time for Clay County Media Specialists. Not only is the conference a time for us to develop professionally, but it's also a time that our Clay County students are highlighted during the Jim Harbin State Awards Ceremony that occurs on the final day of the conference. This year was no exception. Six of our schools had local entries in the 2015-16 competition that advanced from first place at the local level to first place at the regional level, which qualified them to advance to the state level of competition. Final judging took place last June, and then the top three entries statewide in each of 11 categories were recognized at the state awards ceremony in October. Tonight, we honor the six Clay County Schools, 34 Clay County students who advanced to state finals. Most of the schools are represented tonight, but we do have a few conflicts. As I call the name of the winning entry, I'd like for the students, the sponsors, and the media specialists for the winning entry to please come to the front of the room and accept recognition from Superintendent Davis. Please remain at the front until all recipients have been announced and pictures have been taken. From grades K through 2, earning first place from Argyle Elementary for the news feature "The Court Report: Pi Day," were students Court Suarez and Sinclair Francis. Sinclair is participating in the school play tonight, so could not be with us, but sponsor Jessica Ayers is with us, and of course, the star of the show, Court. From K to 2, earning third place from Coppergate Elementary for their instructional video, "Making Muffins with Mia," we have Macy Bader and Mia Petrowski. Kim Moskowsky was both the sponsor and media specialist. In grades 3 through 5, earning first place again from Coppergate Elementary for the news feature "Man's Best Friend," we have Hayden Compton, Kenley Helmuth, and Nate Helmuth. Kim Moskowsky was the sponsor and media specialist. Oh, and here's "Man's Best Friend." That's a wonderful surprise. Moving on to grades 6 through 8, earning first place from Keystone Heights Junior Senior High School for their book trailer, "The Graveyard Book," we have Daylon Eaton, Cody Hollingsworth, Haley Locke, Cheyenne McKinnon, Taylor Noble, Brianna Riley, Sloane Seabird, Robert Gage Stevens, Jacob Stewart, Patricia Woodell, and Patricia Williams is the sponsor. Kathy Williams is the media specialist at Keystone. Are you by yourself tonight? Grades 6 through 8, third place from Coppergate Elementary for the documentary "Art Through the Looking Glass," we have Lauren Chang, Luke Leonard, and Olivia Matos, I forgot how to pronounce her name, I am so sorry. Is that Matos? Matos? Matos. Jennifer Moore was the sponsor, Kimberly Moskowsky was the media specialist and sponsor. Grades 6 through 8, third place from Wilkinson Junior High for the music video "Kinetic Somerset" are Cole Fowler and Carl Mills, Kelly Robertson, sponsor and media specialist. Grades 9 through 12, earning second place from Middleburg High School for the animation Socks, and I don't believe any of the Middleburg High School students could be here tonight, so if one of the administrators wouldn't mind yet accepting their awards for them. Mr. Felton, all right. They were Jordan Justino, Haley Rosenbach, Sage Rodriguez, Troy Turpin, Janelle Visual Casanova, and Kimberly Lanue is the sponsor. Joyce Anderson and Melissa Frampton are the media specialists. Second place from Ridgeview High School for the drama "Love Lives On," they could not be here either, including the sponsor, because he's the baseball coach and they have a game tonight. But accepting for them are the media specialists Darlene Goodeer and Julie Miller. The students were Bailey Layton, Reed Mahan, Anthony Ruiz, Anisha Rush, Carly Schultz. John Scrommelow is the teacher, the sponsor. The baseball coach. Grades 9 through 12, second place, again from Keystone Heights Junior Senior High School for the instructional video "How to Make Peanut Butter Balls," or Brandy Ramos and Chris Toomes, Patricia Williams, sponsor, Kathy Williams, media specialist. At this time, we will show just a few seconds of each winning video as we highlight the outstanding productions created by our students.
Hello, I'm Kyle. Welcome back to the North Carolina Daily Courser Talk. Today, we're going to talk about special day that's coming up, Pi Day. You're to tell us a little more about one of my favorite places in Mississippi. Mrs. Golda, what is Pi Day?
Well, thanks, Court. Thanks for asking about Pi Day.
Welcome to Making Muffins with Me. Step 1, get everything you need to bake with. Step 2, pour powder from bag into bowl, add oil, water, and eggs. Be careful not to get shells in the batter. Mix everything together. Is this man's best friend? To Sergeant Nate Helmuth, he is. This is 8-year-old Toby, Sergeant Helmuth's faithful canine companion. Recently, Sergeant Helmuth visited Coppergate Elementary and told the students Toby's story. Sergeant Helmuth joined the Army not long after September 11th. He was a combat engineer working with explosives in Operation Iraqi Freedom. He served 18 months and got injured by a roadside bomb. When he returned home, he was suffering from anxiety and post-traumatic stress disorder, also known as PTSD. And then Toby came to help.
to do a school-wide art project based on Dale Chouli's artwork. Dale Chouli is an artist who specializes in the art of blown glass. He changed the art by combining small pieces of glass into beautiful masterpieces of large-scale sculptures. Using the team approach, one of his goals is to create environmental art where the art reflects the beauty of nature. His artwork is found all over the world.
and melted butter. Then with your clean hands, you want to mix it yourself to make sure you get all the sugar that is in there. Next, you're gonna want to spray your hands with cooking spray. This will make it easier to roll.
Welcome back to the North Carolina Daily Courser Talk.
I want to recommend that you go on the website to see the full story, because you couldn't get the full story of some of those. It's florida media ed.org, go to Programs, Jim Harbin, Ed Division. Florida media ed.org, Programs, Jim Harbin, Ed Vision. And then you'll see the full stories behind them. We are currently underway for this year's entries, and I hope you students are working on them. The deadline for entry is March 17th, they're supposed to be, they better be, okay, is March 17th. And school board members, everyone, we are, will be judging on March 27th, so put that on your calendars, because we hope you'll be able to help us assist with judging this year. Thank you, students, sponsors, media specialists. You have represented Clay County Public Schools beautifully.
That was really wonderful. Thank you very much. They're always so much fun to watch. Some talent, boy. Our next recognition is something new that the superintendent has chosen to do, and he wants to spotlight a school each month. So this month, we're gonna showcase Middleburg High School.
Well, good evening. Superintendent Davis, board members, I'm Rob Felton, Principal of Middleburg High School. It is an honor to have the privilege to speak with you this evening and highlight and showcase what Middleburg has to offer. And being the first, always love being first. We like to highlight some of the strengths. One of the strengths that we have at Middleburg High School is our school culture. You'll notice the dynamic school culture is rich, and as soon as you walk through the doors, you know you're home. And I think if you've been in our school, you'll feel that immediately when you walk in. That has been over generations, and it's something that our staff, our faculty, from our custodians all the way to the top, everybody throughout loves the school and takes pride in the school, and you can tell that. With a small-town feel, the staff, students, and community take pride in their commitment to continue to make the school a great place to learn. For the past two years, the administration and staff have worked collectively to continue the strong school culture while also implementing systems for improvement. Our teachers returned this school year in 1617. They were challenged to advocate and take responsibility for all. So that's where the "all" means "all" came from. I'd also like to recognize tonight, just because we have that hometown feel, I do have my vice principal, Mr. Williams. Assistant Principal, Ms. Stephanie Palmer. And Assistant Principal Scott Thomas. So I think it means a lot to me that they came to support Middleburg High School tonight as well. So thank you. I think that shines in our school culture as well. Another one of our strengths is the common message. This year, I began the year by meeting with every cohort group, 9th grade through 12th grade, and showed a video about the importance of graduating and continuing to learn beyond high school. After four days and 24 presentations, all students heard the same voice conveying the same message. It is often said that kids will live up to expectations, and high expectations, if we expect it from them. This year, when meeting with all the students, I set the expectation of best effort each day, and described exactly what that looked like as a Middleburg High School student. We hold students accountable for these behaviors each day. The motto has gone viral with students, and they use the motto as motivation to do their best. Students tweet the motto. I don't know if we know what tweeting is, but I'm, I'm getting more familiar with it, but students do. And they'll send pictures of examples of their best effort. And they'll stop me in the hallway and say, "Mr. Felton, are you giving your best effort today?" Some days, if we're honest, we say we're trying, but that challenges us to make sure that we do give our best effort each day, and that's what we ask, ask from our students. Bronco Nation is an innovation, innovation way that Middleburg High School has tried to tackle some of our opportunities. We leverage time, we leverage people, and we leverage the curriculum. While a culture of belonging is certainly outstanding, the new rigor of the Florida standards still challenges our students' performance on state assessments. Using a collective process with the staff, MHS has become the first school to get 100% buy-in for the implementation of a schedule that provides both remediation and acceleration support for students during the school day. During this time, teachers are available for tutoring and support student learning. Every 9th grader is assigned a 2020 time, and 2020 is the year of their graduation. Freshmen students scoring below grade level on the FSA ELA assessment are placed in our Achieve 3,000 reading labs during this time. Data is analyzed to ensure students are making learning gains. To date, 60% of these students have continued to make reading learning gains. How do we leverage people? Building on the "all means all" culture, we have worked hard to build buy-in and take a collective responsibility for all students, no matter if they are assigned to you or not. During our 2020 time, our enrichment time, you'll find coaches, support staff, teachers. If they don't teach them, they're still tutoring them and working with them. A personal relationship or a professional relationship, students want to get help from anybody on our campus. So during this time, we have a school-wide lunch where 1,750 students eat at one time for 60 minutes. 30 minutes, we require students to get that extra help. If you're an AP student, you're finding that time, and they do. They want it, they love it, they need it. Our students that maybe are struggling learners or need the extra time for support and assistance, they have that time. It's fantastic to be able to sit in a parent conference and say, "Do you understand, two days a week, you don't need transportation?" We have it built in that they can find any teacher on our campus anytime they can get help. It's nice when you see a parent look that child in the eye and say, "Johnny, you know where you need to be." All right, so they want that child with that teacher for those two days a week. How do we leverage our curriculum? At Middleburg High School, we've created a working bell schedule that operates on a blended block schedule two days a week, where students are provided opportunity to dive deeper into the curriculum with a 100-minute lesson. Students have opportunities to talk, think, read, write, each day, every day, as well as engage in problem-based and inquiry learning experiences where teachers can differentiate their instruction. Our commitment. C to G. MHS was the first high school in Clay County to provide an opportunity for our 2020 students to participate in a commitment ceremony. It was a precursor to graduation. On September 30th, 2016, during the ceremony which mirrored a graduation ceremony, I asked each student to commit to put forth their best effort during their freshman year and beyond. The end result in four years, graduation. And many of you were there and took part and observed and witnessed what took place on September 30th, 2016. We made a decision to stop talking about transitioning from 9th grade, but to start talking about graduation the minute they walk through our doors, and focus on that, that piece. We want graduation in four years. So we provided each 9th grader, student with a reminder wristband with C to G 2020. Commit to graduate in 2020. I will provide one of those for you as well. Ownership opportunities. We have great partnerships with local businesses in our area, our academies. Our two that we would like to highlight tonight, we have many more, but the two that we highlight are, we started a partnership with ViStar this school year with a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 27th. Our new ViStar branch has opened 52 new accounts that support our students, our staff, and our teachers. Also, our medical program has partnered with another strong community member. Also, our medical program has partnered with another strong community member, St. Vincent's Medical Center. Students have opportunities to log clinical hours each day. Last year, we had 100% pass rate in both CNA and EKG certifications, and EKG was the first opportunity last year. So what does that all mean? It means Middleburg High School is where "all" really does mean "all." I would like to believe that Middleburg High School is a trendsetter in the fact that they are the first to establish a blended schedule where students can accelerate their learning and be supported, to walk the doors committing to graduate, and having opportunities to partner with strong businesses. I've said this since the day that I walked in Middleburg's doors. It is the best-kept secret in Clay County. Believe it. If you don't, come visit. Thank you for your time this evening and continued support. Thank you.
Yeah. Through the chair, Mr. Felton, you, thank you so very much for being the first, but I want to tell you tonight, you set the bar. Your professionalism, your energy, your focus is really excited, exciting opportunity for Clay County, and I'm excited to learn and lead next to you in order to be all in and in order to grow and create great things within your school, within this county. So thank you for being the first, but also thank you for setting a high bar for this organization.
Right. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. I will say this, they asked if I wanted a wireless mic, but I needed to stay right here because if not, we'd talk education all night, correct? Thank you.
And also thank you, Mr. Williams, Ms. Palmer, and Mr. Thomas as well. Thank you.
Well, that was really nice, very refreshing. At this time, it's the last call for cards if there's anybody who wants to speak. And let the record reflect that Ms. Bola is home with the flu. So let's all hope that she feels better real soon, and we're thankful she's not spreading her germs. Well, she would be sitting down there, and poor Ms. Gillhausen's already got it. Okay, so I think you've probably noticed we've changed up our agenda a little bit. We've started out with some really bright spots in our district, you know, the cherry pickers and some presentations and awards and recognitions. And we've decided to have our presentation from the audience at the beginning of our meeting instead of at the end where people would have to wait all night. We know some nights it was pretty late. So at this time, we're going to have presentation from the audience. And the first one is Ms. Laura Mayberry, and she'll be speaking on Stuff and Things. And I thought that was so cute, Stuff and Things. Okay, one down. Next, we have Julie Robson. Has Julie been advised not to speak also?
Hello, my name is Julie Robson. My address is on file. First, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm excited to see the new direction that Clay County schools are heading. Now I come here as a concerned parent. I've spoken here a few times concerning issues that involve my children on an ESC bus with Ms. Suzanne Brisbane holding my children hostage. To this day, for unknown reasons other than a possible "I'll show you" moment since you complained on me, other issues, sharing student information, which is against policy, flicking me off while driving the bus with children on the bus to be exact elementary students. Myself and other parents feel that transportation does not take us serious when we bring our issues, complaints to them. It goes in one ear, out the other, when we have documentation proof it's ignored. Supervisors make assumptions, make lies on things instead of really investigating the problem. Too many cover-ups, too many favors, too many buddies. Parents complain till they're blue in the face. It's time for someone to really hold transportation responsible for their actions. In conclusion, Mr. Davis, if you would, please, please look into all that goes on in transportation. The safety of our children are the most important thing in this world. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Robson. The next is Ms. Wanda, is it, Klimer?
That aggravates me. Anyway, on a lighter note, my name is Wanda Klimer, and my address is on file. Last year, we fought tooth and nail transportation issues. This year, I have a new agenda. We have school bus loops that need to be addressed. We have schools speaking. Charles E. Bennett, I am a bus driver in Greencove. The school bus loop there is horrible. If one bus breaks down, every bus behind that bus is stuck until the first bus is moved. It is hard to get in and out of that bus loop, and so if you would, please, come visit, look at what we're talking about, and help us to get this matter changed. At Clay High, you can get out in the afternoon because we have an officer escorting us out, letting us out. But when you get in in the mornings to drop your students off, you can barely get out without having an accident. That's a big problem. We have issues that we need addressed. There are other schools like Oakleaf High, I've heard drivers over the radio complaining about not being able to get out because cars are going in front of them. Thunderbolt, Patterson. So we've got issues with our bus loops that we really, really need to have fixed. One, so our children don't get hurt. Two, so we don't have accidents with children on them, and the buses have to sit there for an hour while report's done. So if you would, please help us with that. The other thing is, we have, there are two routes out on 16 East, which is better known as Leonard C. Taylor Parkway. We need some bus stop sign ahead, signs out there on that road. The speed limit goes from 45 to 55. Right where both bus stops are at, that speed limit increases to 55. You know as well as I do, drivers exceed that speed before they even get to the speed limit sign. We need some signs out there, flashing light, whatever you've got to do, whatever you can get us. We need them out there so as that nobody gets hurt out there as well. Next thing, phone numbers for principals, for schools, for nurses. You have drivers that, I'm not asking any principal, any teacher, to be at a school at 5:00 in the morning when I leave, but to at least be there by 6:00, so as that when somebody needs you and needs your attention, you can be there, somebody can get ahold of you. And in the afternoons, when a parent's not there to pick up a kindergartner, we can get ahold of that school and say, "Hey, our driver is having to bring this kid back because..." You know, or if we have a big fight on a bus, we're not pulling a bus over on side of the road, we're heading back to the school, and we need administration there. And then the last thing, we need more than one dispatcher if you can see your way clear because one dispatcher for every driver in Clay County is not enough in the mornings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Klimer. Mr. Davis, I know you're taking notes over here. Would you look into both of these issues and see if you can figure something out for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Our next card is Ms. Amy Smith.
Hello, everyone. My name's Amy Smith. My address is on file. Tell everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. All right, mine is more of a personal, concerns my kids, mainly my daughter that is in third grade with Common Core. She brings home her homework, her schoolwork, and I'm going through with it. And I'm one of those parents, I'm on her. She knows she has to have good grades, and she tries her hardest. But when she brings home work, that is division, and she has not even done multiplication yet except for up to threes. And she brings in multiplication, I mean, division, and they haven't even learned. She brings home division, and they haven't learned multiplication. That is an issue. How do you expect our kids to be able to exceed and division if they haven't learned multiplication? When my daughter had asked the teacher about that, because I sat at home going through with her how to do division, she asked her teacher why they were already doing division. Her teacher said because they have to get, teach both of them to be able to get at the end of the year for them to be able to pass that test. So with this, we are teaching our kids to pass a test? I mean, her teacher is phenomenal, takes time with her, anytime. But when she brings on test papers that have division on there and haven't even been done with multiplication because they have to pass the test at the end of the year to be able to pass third grade? My daughter has all As except for 1B, and it's an 88. She's probably got it up to NA by now if I haven't, because I haven't checked it this week, her grades. But she does phenomenal. So what is that saying with our testing? If she, because she's not, honestly, not a great test taker, but when she sits down to figure out her work, she got it, and she's awesome with math. But I'm worried about her at the end of the school year when it comes to taking that. When all of her grades show that she can do all the work, that grade at the end, because they're cramming so much in and haven't been able to actually process all of her multiplications before division? What are we teaching next and going to be going into? I'm scared after this. What's fixing to come in if they haven't even finished their division in that time? So if y'all can please look into something with this Common Core to get her out, to help all the kids out with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, our last card is Ms. Becky Smith.
My name is Becky Smith. My address is on file. But I know you're seeing the look probably you haven't seen before. I am frustrated. I am a Clay County school bus driver and proud to be one. But when I hear parents being flicked off, it's embarrassing. And for that, I'm sorry that that's happened to you. It's very unprofessional. When I hear kids with Common Core, I've spoke to y'all before concerning children getting on my bus upset about this Common Core, we're setting our children up for failure. Can't expect them to do division if they haven't had multiplication. And as I always say, what the crap? Seriously. You're setting them up for failure. That's unacceptable. We're supposed to elevate our children. We need to start elevating our children. Let our teachers teach and get rid of this Common Core. Now, far as transportation goes, Mr. Davis, I'm asking you to look into transportation. We've got a lot of bumpy roads these last couple weeks, and a lot of stuff's going on that needs to be looked into. We have a responsibility to transport our children safely, and I take that at the utmost importance. Some of you know I had a little accident, which is embarrassing because I take that very personal. Safety of our children is the utmost importance. What's going on is unacceptable. Someone's going to end up really seriously getting hurt. You board members, some of you, Mr. Davis, you know what I'm talking about. And I don't really feel like I need to air this out, but something really needs to be done. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Well, that's the end of our presentation from the audience. At this time, we're going to move into our consent agenda. We've had one item pulled, so Item C4, the personnel consent agenda, has been pulled to discussion. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Move we adopt the consent agenda except for the options.
Before you do that, if we could move C2, the proposed allocation changes, to match the personnel consent agenda in the discussion, that would be advisable.
They do go together, okay. Thank you. So we'll move Items C2 and C4.
All right.
Down to discussion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Items C2, 3, and 4 that were moved to discussion.
Second.
We're pulling Item C3 as well?
C3 was already pulled.
It was on the...
Okay. It's already been pulled. So it's just, I'm sorry, Ms. Condon, did you second?
I did second, but I, C3 looks like it's still there on the discussion. I mean, on the consent. The Safe Schools Assessment.
Yeah, that was, that was not moved. Yeah, C3 is up there. Legislative Priorities was moved, C3A.
I see.
Oh, okay, okay.
But since that was moved earlier, we just need to move C2 and C4 at this time.
Yes, I did second.
All right. I have a motion by Mrs. Studdard, a second by Ms. Condon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 4-0. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Renali Paiva to come and give us an update from the Clay County Education Association.
Good evening. Renali Paiva, President of the CCEA. Just a couple things of concern for us. When I first came to this school district 19 years ago, we used to have a notary at every school, and I thought that was, that was great because it was a community thing. So if people couldn't afford to get something notarized, they knew that they had to go to the local school, and they could get it done. We don't have that anymore, and we don't have a notary at every school. And we also have a lot of faculty members who have been very sick lately or needed days, and in order to transfer days over to them, it has to be notarized for payroll. So a couple times, it's been kind of an emergency situation, and I called at one instance, I called three schools in the same area, and none of them had a notary. So I would like, if Mr. Davis could, see if we can put that, I don't know if it's in somebody's job description, it used to always be the principal secretary, and I kept forgetting to ask you if we could have a look at it because parents come into the school, I know as a guidance counselor, parents used to come in and say, "Can I get a notary?" No, we don't have one. At Orange Park Junior, we always had one, so it was really great. And I'm concerned that we seem to have a lack of notaries, and I don't know if it's a cost associated or if somebody, but I'd like to see that brought back in. The other concern from teachers lately is fundraising. We have a new requirement that we hadn't been doing before, where we couldn't sell snacks anymore during the school day, or I'm not sure what that is. And apparently, it's a, it's a law, it's a statute. So I think maybe we should have some sort of a roundtable think about this because we have clubs, we have yearbook, we have class sponsor, and they're all kind of throwing their hands up going, "How am I going to earn this money?" Because they used to sell all sorts of muffins in the mornings, doughnuts or whatever. So grab, you know, graduation, all that stuff, and every one of them, all these sponsors are calling me. And if we're going to take it away, we kind of need to have to think about what we're going to do for these because I would hate to see kids not, drama kids can't go to state, they can't afford it. And we used to sell, they used to sell things to be able to send these kids to state, and there has to be an alternative. I understand we have to abide by the law, but we have to have a thought of what we're going to do to be able to raise money for our children to be able to compete and to be able to go to different places. That has been a huge concern this month because I think January, we start this new. I'm not doing it. I asked other counties what they do, and the president of St. John's... I asked other counties what they do, and the president of St. John's texts me back and she said, well, I just bought a Hershey's bar at this junior high. So I know it's all, the regulations out there, but there's still some things, because we don't know an alternative. So, Mr. Davis, maybe we need another committee. That'll be fun. Okay, your legislative priorities?
Are you buying candy bars?
I know, we want candy bars back, you know? And they asked me, because there is a regulation about healthy snacks. So are they allowed to do the healthy snacks within the school day? That's something to look at, because some schools are saying no to me, and other schools saying, well, if it's under those calories, why not? So I don't know what the law is, but we're going to have to figure that one out. Seriously, I know at Orange Park High School, they had four people drop out of going to state, because they simply cannot afford to go, you know? And so it is, and those people at Orange Park Junior are serious about fundraising, you know? And I think all the high schools probably are. Legislative priorities, every time there's an election, every time there's anything, it's all this talk about, I'm against Common Core. We're going to have to be against Common Core. If that's, if that's what you ran on, that's your feeling, you know darn well, your state legislators approved Common Core. We have to stop not being truthful to parents, and I don't think we're purposely not being truthful. If it's developmentally inappropriate, then it's time at the local level that we stand up to it. And that's, that's my feeling. So when I hear, when I hear that parent, and I hear my teachers, you know, I had a teacher today say kindergarten, and my principal said to me, well, you got to do the testing strategies, you know, or third grade, or second grade testing. No, we don't. We have to be kids. We have to start developing children, and we've lost sight of that. And I'm just old, so I can say that. Okay? And, you know, I absolutely agree. Legislative priorities, I'm going, I've asked to speak to the legislative hearing, so Senator Bradley and both our representatives coming in, Payne, you know what I'm going to speak on? It's going to be testing, because we have to stand up to that. I know we obey state law that we're only 5%, but all you're doing is timing the actual test. You're not timing the hours that our teachers spend preparing, teaching kids how to use the computer or their device, drop-down boxes, mice. You know, our kids don't use a mouse normally, they're swiping everything, so it's a whole learning. So to make that 90-minute test, we're spending hours teaching kids to test. There's something wrong with that. And we, I will be talking to the state legislative, but again, our local school boards have to start standing up. And I, at the calendar committee this week, last, this week, last week, I don't remember now, I said it's time for parents, parents have to join us on that. We cannot win this argument without the parents. And that's what the testing has to do. We have to stop the madness of testing. So that's going to be my legislative, go crazy on those people again. Okay? Pay, one thing missing from your legislative priorities, and I'm going to bring it to your attention, because it's a concern with all our teachers throughout the state, and that's pay for performance. Let me, let me try to see if I can get you guys to understand what that's doing to the teaching profession. I care about this profession. I've been in it a long time. This is my 40th year in this teaching profession. Yes, we're not afraid of accountability, and we're not afraid of tests. We develop them. But we are really sick and tired of coming up with laws of how teachers get paid. It's like some sort of war on teachers. And one of those wars on teachers is pay for performance. If I said to you, all brand-new rookie cops have to get paid more than veteran cops, or all brand-new rookie firemen must get paid more than veteran firemen, because we give no value to seniority or experience, you would look at me like I was a little off the rail here. But that's what we're saying to teachers. If you're a highly effective teacher, you must get, and an AC, annual contract teacher, you must get paid by law more than veteran teachers that are holding a continuing contract. All you're saying is you devalue me and those 40 years I spent in this, and we're in a bargaining, you know? So it's a forefront of our thought. It's missing from your legislative priorities. At least I would like my school board to have a look at exactly what the law says, and then talk to your teachers on how it makes them feel. If we don't change the morale of the teaching profession, Florida's going to suffer, and our children are going to suffer. And that's, I would like you to, for all of you, to take a look at that, and to have conversation with your, your teachers about how that makes them feel. Mr. Davis asked me if I would get together some committees, just a few, 17, and I have. So there, 17 committees have been formed, 140 teachers have answered the call to come forward, and I will be sending you that list tomorrow, and we can go ahead and start having that conversations with them. There are literacy committees, there are math committees, there are ESE committees, there are climate committees, there are discipline committees and student services committees. And lots of teachers have a lot to say. And I value, and I'm really glad you're putting, as part of your 100-day plan, I'm really glad to see that you're putting together and going to spend the time to talk, you know, you call it listen and talk, is that what you call it? Something like, something like that. I call it chill and chat. So everybody was correcting me today. I said, no, it's Mr. Davis's chill and chats going on. On behalf of the CCEA, I wish every one of you an absolutely Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and see you in January. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Piva.
Chill and chat.
I don't think Mr. Davis knows how to chill.
Through the chairs, there's never any time.
There's no time for that. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Teresa Dixon from our CESP to come up and give us an update.
Well, good evening. It's really nice to be here and to be invited. It's just, kind of makes me feel warm and fuzzy. But I just wanted to say, first of all, personally, I did Performance Matters testing today. We had that, that in school for the, for the semester exams, and we were doing Performance Matters on U.S. history in the lab setting. And lo and behold, we had a glitch. I got a call from, from the people who were testing in the labs. My students can't see the graphics attached to the test. So they're given a political cartoon and asked to answer a question related to a political cartoon that they couldn't see. Problem. So I scramble around, I make some copies of the graphics and get it to them. District office contacted them, and, and they got on it right away, and they took care of the issue. But there again, we have to think, as Renali was speaking too, our teachers are being accountable for this, you know? And anytime you have a testing situation where you have a student that something goes wrong, the frustration level of the students rise and their performance decreases, and it's going to affect our teachers and the students. So it's just something I just wanted to bring up. On the flip side here, I just want to say, from the support perspective, I've been hearing some different chit-chat lately. I've been hearing words of optimism. I've been hearing some, some hopefulness. I've been hearing people say, wow, I think somebody's listening. I've been hearing people say that, that they're getting a sense that the work that they do maybe matters a little bit. And that's a good feeling. We're, we're moving in the right direction, and I appreciate that. And then tonight, to come here, and, and I just want to remind all of you, those cherry pickers that were up here, they were wonderful. And Uncle John was our Support Related Employee of the Year for Clay County last year. This is what your support does. Your support make an impact on the lives of the students, along with your teachers. But your support do make that impact. And then to listen to Ms. Roth give that beautiful presentation for Ms. Bachelor, who started out as what? A Support Employee. Our Support Employee are in the, in, in the, capable of doing great things if given the opportunity to do that. And that's what we want to do. Mr. Davis, we want to be part of your Elevate Clay Plan. We want to be a part of it. We are the ones that these students see first thing, they're the first people that most of our students see, and the last people that most of our students see. I've seen custodial staff sitting in a courtyard, talking with a student who's having a meltdown for some reason. I've seen cafeteria workers pay for a child's lunch that didn't have money for lunch. I've seen teachers assistants buy shoes and coats. I've seen nurses provide clothing for students who don't have it. I've seen secretarial staff go together and, and provide needs and food for students. Your support staff make a difference in the lives of the students. We want to make a difference, and we want to be included in this plan, and we think that together, we're going to grow this. So I just urge you, tap into those amazing resources that you have at your fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I, I just really appreciate it. And, you know, the beginning of your, of your opportunity to speak, really, hopefully, we're setting a tone, and we're really starting to listen, collaborate, and learn from our, our stakeholders, whether they are teachers, community members, support staff, because as I said it before, this is a 360 accountability option for us. Everyone in this room, everyone in this county, everyone in this organization, it would take all of us in order to elevate Clay. And I thank you for your diligence to push us to do better, and I'm excited about the opportunity to work alongside of you and your staff. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's update and presentation.
Thank you. And through the chair, I want to spend my time this evening just talking about Elevate Clay. I know that I have a new term for chat and, what is it? Chill, chat and chill?
Chill and chat.
I'll have to kind of incorporate that in some of my, my next conversations. But I had a presentation that, there we go, Elevate Clay. And tonight, I just want to talk about the rationale for, for building this plan. You know, when you get into a part where you, you're in this campaign and you're working to become the next leader of Clay County in order to improve the experiences for, in teaching and learning within, within the school system, you know, and you win the primary and you start to think, oh, wow, we're getting closer to potentially winning this opportunity to, to be honored to be the superintendent in Clay County school system. And then you get to the, the general election, you actually win. Well, there's a couple-week period where you say, wow, what am I going to do? You know, you know, I'm about to get the, the keys to this Ferrari, and do I push the gas pedal? Is it going to be a stick shift? Is it going to be automatic? Where do I park it? And the same thing, and I consider Clay County to be that Ferrari as it relates to a high-function and high-quality school system. And, you know, in order for me to come in, I'm trying to figure out what's going to happen in this day. So really sat down and created this 100-day entry plan, which this plan really acts as a blueprint for my actions in the first 100 days. It really facilitates my leadership and my collaboration with all of our stakeholders. And this evening, I just want to talk about what I plan to do as we move forward in our, in our 100 days. As you look about the rationale, as I said before, this is just an opportunity for me to listen, learn, problem solve, and act, to really engage every stakeholder in this organization, in the community, in the business organization, to really figure out what our strengths and what our weaknesses are in this organization, what our opportunities are as well. And this really allows me to have a better understanding of how I can better assist and work alongside of our community members and our educators in order to build capacity collectively, to really create the best experiences for our students. This 100-day plan really allows us to do the SWOT analysis, as I talked about, with the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, identify any threats, so that really can be thoughtful about our way of work as we move forward in the 100 days. And it really gives us a systematic approach and keeps me focused for what I'm, what I have to accomplish, in order to give a thoughtful plan and analysis to the board, to really create our map in reference to our next steps. As we look at the superintendent's role, I think there's really three areas that a superintendent should really focus on. The first one is a superintendent has to be an agent of change. This is where one who really moves peoples, people and organizations forward under any difficult situation. And it, it's not easy to lead an organization and lead a school system. Every day, our teachers come to work, they work so hard, our support staff and our leaders, it's not an easy job, because what we're doing are creating the foundation of our learners and creating the individuals to be able to compete in the, in our global society. And I believe also, a superintendent's role is also to be the, the leading learner, the one who really understands and models learning, but also creates the norms and the conditions for one to learn. This is where we don't take an approach from a top-down, but we work side-by-side, our, our leaders and our teachers, to problem solve and decision make and, and work collectively to look at every facet of the school system more to be successful. And the final part, I believe, a superintendent's role is, is to be a system player. What do we got to do? How can I contribute to our success? And what can we do in order to, to work collectively to really understand the entire system? And what can we do to put processes in place where we're working and, and everything that we do is aligned to our strategic plan, which we eventually developed after our 100-day plan? As we look at our, as we look in organizations, every organization has, should be focused on the theory of change. And we talk about a theory of change, our ultimate goal and the first step of, of leading Clay County will be to make certain that we build a positive, focused, focused school communities, where we have a safe environment and it's conducive to learning in every facet, whether it's on the bus, whether it's in our classroom, whether it's in our common areas. How do we interact with our staff and how do we interact with our students in order to create the best environment? And if we do this, then we can transition to developing great educators and great leaders. And by doing this, this is working through HR and making sure that we have our recruitment strategies to really focus on keeping our irreplaceables and recruiting the best and the brightest from the organization as it relates to teachers, administrators, and, and support staff as well. And this also makes certain that we're very honest in our evaluation systems, how they look, how we're evaluating, how we're holding crucial conversations, and how we're building capacities. And then, and another part of this is really looking at how our professional development is leveraged and used to maximizing human capital, so we truly understand our state standards and how to leverage the curriculum in order to improve results. And once we have a great, a safe environment, once we have an, an opportunity to provide strategic mapping for our hiring processes, and we have a great professional learning, we then get to focus on our instruction. And these are the three areas that you got to really focus on to make certain that we have an opportunity to leverage curriculum, to have excellent look-forers, which I will work with every principal, every teacher, every, every principal supervisor, to better define our roles. Because if we have a great environment, we develop our stakeholders and our teachers, our support staff, and we have a great instruction in our classroom, then we will be able to accomplish what we aspire to accomplish, which is to make certain our students are college and career and life-ready. And that's what we aspire to do, and that's a K-12 continuum, and that's a K-12 focus. And that theory of change will lead, will lead the areas of focus of my, my plan for Elevate Clay. And the first one, I have six areas that I'll focus on. And the first one is to, to make sure we enhance the board and superintendent relationship. I will tell you, the last four weeks have been beautiful from a superintendent standpoint to interact with everybody on this board. They've been very receptive, very professional. Please note, they have pushed back respectfully. We, we've had hard conversations, we've had great conversations, and this is a team effort. This is not Addison Davis, the superintendent in the school board. The mentality of that is no longer. This is a team that will lead together and stand side-by-side and problem solve. We will not work in isolation, and we will always act professional. We will not always have, thank you, I'm not telling you we're always going to have a 5-0 vote, because we're not, because these individuals are here for kids, but they are going to hold me accountable, and I'm going to help every moment and every minute to help them understand my vision for elevating Clay County and moving the experiences. The next goal would be to look at every facet of our framework. Do our instructional frameworks work? Are they best for our kids? What are our structures? What, how is our technology platforms used to leverage our, our results with our kids? Are we not only teaching that whole, whole group and whole development, are we really focused on small group and then individualized learning? And this allows us to look at our assessments as well. Are, do our assessments internally, are they validated? Do they really match what the state assessments, and allows us to have a predictor, true predictor? And if they're not, we need to sit back and refine and engage teachers in order to create the best experiences for our kids. And then most importantly, I think, in this organization, which I've been trying to own and create in the last four weeks, is really creating a positive culture. We have professionalism from every aspect of this organization. We will model that from this side, and we will make sure that we, that trickles down We will model that from this side and we will make sure that we, that trickles down not only at the district level, but at the school level, but also on the classroom level, which will permeate through our students and to our parents. And then my next one would be looking at our performance management system. Does everybody in this room understand the district's vision and mission? And if we do not, it is my job to make sure you do, so that we can work side by side and create that 360 accountability that I spoke about earlier. And then making sure that I connect the, the entire community and the public, so they have a voice and they really start to be student advocates, and advocates of Clay County School System. And understand that it's not acceptable to have the yo-yo factor of being an A to a B to an A to a B, but we're systemically an A, because we are high functioning and we have first round draft picks in our classrooms and also in our support staff. And then finally, look at any types of organization and operations. A number of items we spoke, the stakeholders spoke, spoke about this evening, about our transportation, what can we do to get better? I look forward to diving into that facet of our organization so that we can create the safe environment for our students. These six areas will lead my body of work in the first 100 days. And I'll have a plan, excuse me, for 30 days, 60 days, and 100 days. Then I will work with the board to have a retreat, to give a report about where we, you know, what my findings are in order to move forward. So ultimately, the outcome for the Elevate Clay and the mentality of it is to look at key findings, observations, and, and feedback, in order to create a thoughtful strategic plan that would drive our body of work. And I said the other night in my, my Listen and Learn Tour, which is my chat and chill, new chat and chills. I'm not, indirectly, I'm held accountable every four years to the community members in Clay County. I'm telling you, that's not good enough. I will hold myself accountable every school year. I will partner with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure we have a state of the schools and we'll look at holding myself accountable for having initiatives, targets, and projects that I will report out to the board on quarterly. And then also, we'll give it an annually assessment to make sure that we're doing the right things. This is my accountability. So please know that we will always have a staircase approach to success and everyone in this room and the community will know how successful Addison Davis has been, but more importantly, how, how successful Clay County has been. And the other side is make sure we have a shared vision for our work, in ways we're going to strengthen it. Look at everywhere, my steps are to look at the, the budget, to make sure that we have a healthy financial status, to look at expanding and retaining and high, our irreplaceables for our teachers, what we can do to incentivize them, leveraging our curriculum to, to obtain results, looking at working with our teachers and our administrators and our principals to have master schedule guidelines and every grade bands that are intentional for our kids and best for our kids, so that we can set them up for success. And really looking at middle school reform based on data. What can we do from our junior high perspective to really help our junior highs be successful? Because that's a try and time for our stakeholders and for our kids and for our parents as well as they deal with middle schools. And luckily, I just got out of that, that version of it, but it always stays forever because it sticks with you, because that's where our kids are trying to figure out who they are academically, emotionally, and socially and behaviorally. And then we'll look at implementing a survey, a survey. I'll be launching a cultural index survey, partner with the new teacher project that I've worked with teachers through the board and also through the union to make certain they understand what we need to look at and cut every facet of our school system, so that we can prioritize our results and really focus on our culture. And then looking at a data warehouse and then really marketing our schools in order to be successful. It'll be a number of phases that we will have this process, I said 30, 60, 90 days. I know this is four phases, but you'll be looping along the way about how we accomplish our 100-day plan and move forward. The way we shape our priorities has to be through our academic services. What do we do to build capacity of our principals, hold our principals accountable for learning and, and being instructional coaches to our teachers? What do we do to really be talent managers and build the right culture? How do we really leverage our curriculum and empower our teachers to, to, to work hard and continue to work hard in their classrooms? And what do we do from a human resources perspective? But everything we do will be set up by this, by this slide here, which is all about goal-based management. Right now, we have a lot of things going on throughout our county, a lot of directions with curriculum, a lot of directions with misunderstandings with vision and mission, and we have to become goal-based centered, management-centered. And this is where we will be collectively identifying and articulate a pathway to success, that everyone in this organization understands our guidelines and our principles and understands their roles, and we leverage the results in order to be successful with this organization. Now, my chat and chills sessions will be, Listen and Learn sessions will be throughout the county. We had our first one at Oakleaf Senior High School. Very thank you to, for those who attended, it was well-attended. Thank you to Ms. Pickett for, for opening her doors. And our next one will be at Keystone Heights Junior-Senior High School on January 10th when we return. It's open to anyone to come sit and have dialogue with me, so you will understand my vision and my mission, but more importantly, I will understand the community, what your angst is, and validate the great things, so I can better problem solve and be successful. I thank you for your time tonight and I look forward to elevating Clay County.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next on our agenda is, under school board members, is to review the board's letter that we are sending to the Office of Inspector General. We had a special meeting on the 6th of December where the board had unanimously decided that we would send a letter asking the Office of Inspector General to review the report that has come back and see if it requires further investigation. So I have, as the chairman, I took everybody's concerns and drafted a letter and I brought it with me for, for you to see. I spoke with Mr. Oscar Restrepo and I followed his instruction on what to put in this letter. He said, just do the timeline, paint the picture, tell the story. And so I've, I've put everything in here for the board to review and I, he has asked that, Mr. Davis, that we overnight this report and letter to him tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
So I told him that we would have it in the mail and that he would, he would be receiving it. So just, if you wouldn't mind, give us a moment to go through it and we'll discuss
Ms. Carrickis, my understanding from our workshop was that your letter was going to essentially say that there were potentially people that didn't come forward who have information that might be pertinent to the investigation and just to simply relay that message to the Inspector General. This, there's a lot of opinion in here.
Well...
And I, I feel like the, this is not what we discussed at our workshop.
Well, we did discuss it. I think we were in agreement that it wasn't handled correctly, that the letter that was sent to the chairman of the board did not come to this board for the board to act on whether or not we investigate internally or not. The former chairman instructed the former superintendent to do an investigation. This is all facts. That's what's in this letter and this is what Mr. Restrepo asked for. He said, I want the facts of what took place. So it is maybe a little more lengthy than I had expected it to be, but this letter in my mind is facts of what took place. I know at the meeting on the 6th, Mrs. Bola, Ms. Condon, Ms. Studdard, myself, were all, it seemed in extreme agreement. You did agree also, although you were a little apprehensive. I think in order to clear the good name of the Clay County School District, this just needs to be addressed by someone outside. And Mr. Restrepo said, they, they may get the report and decide they're happy with it and it goes no further, and I'm fine with that. But they may get it and say, you know, because I did put in here that there are, you know, we have gotten phone calls, I've gotten them, from people who, up until this point, were afraid to come forward. We talked about whistleblower protection and Mr. Sykes sent us some information today about that. So we're aware of, that there is whistle, whistleblower protection out there. It's a little, not too sure about the language there, because these are all school board local employees and not state employees, and the language that was in that referenced state employees. However, I think that this letter is spot-on and I feel very strongly that this is the letter that we should be sending and I'll open it up for discussion. It's, this is not an action item. This, we have consensus that we were sending one, of course, respectfully. I will alter anything that needs to be.
I think if you're going to send that as a letter from the entire board, the board needs to vote on it.
No, we don't.
Because, because otherwise, what you're doing is you're saying that each one of the board members is agreeing with that letter.
Right.
And I don't think that's what they've said.
Right. I, I need the opportunity to voice my, obviously, the majority will rule in this situation. I'm, I just, but it, it's my right as a board member to have a vote in it.
Right. This is not an action item. We discussed this at a special meeting. At the special meeting, we decided we were sending a letter. So we are sending a letter.
Right.
You can oppose what's in the letter, but if the majority of the board through consensus is happy with the letter, then this is what we will send. But I, I'm absolutely open to making changes to it, you know? But I, like I said, I feel very strongly that...
Like I said, I don't have a problem with us sending a letter. We talked about this at the workshop. My issue is that we're, we're, we're picking at old scabs, frankly.
And we need to, because we're elected officials. We can't bury our head in the sand and just expect that this is going to go away. We, when this is brought to our attention, we have a responsibility to act on it. We can't un-hear something. So if we don't state the facts, so that he has a clearer picture of what took place here in our district and we try to sugarcoat it, then we're all part of a cover-up. And we're just as responsible as the former chairman and the former superintendent, who I feel didn't handle it properly.
With all due respect though, that's your opinion. The, this interpretation of what went down, that's your, your interpretation of it. And that's not necessarily the same interpretation I've heard from district staff who were involved in this. So I, I respectfully disagree with you, just that, in the fact that it's not just the facts, it's your version of the facts.
Is there any other discussion or comment?
I, I would feel more comfortable if, I like how at the beginning, you start off with, I am writing you.
Because it was sent to the chairman, so I'm not trying to unilaterally do anything appropriate.
No, let me finish. I think you should. I think you should say, I, because it is your, it, you are the chair, you were elected as the chair. Sorry, I'm looking to wear my glasses at you. I can't look at that and look at you and, and be able to see it. But I think you should, you, you were elected the chair unanimously and I think you should send the letter as the chair. I think you should say, I. And then, there's nothing else there on the front page and then the second page, and then on the third page, it's great, you said, it's my belief that our previous school board, that sentence is fine. And then, the only thing I would have an issue with is two things on that last page. One is, should you investigate these matters further, school board members can provide you with names of individuals to speak with to provide further insight. I think to, in order to protect the integrity of an investigation, we should not be a part of it, because we would be receiving back from the Inspector General any findings. And so I think for any of us to be directly involved could be, could look like we are trying to affect the outcome of that investigation. So that sentence kind of nags at me. And then secondly, we, the members of the Clay County School Board are now requesting you appoint the Office of Inspector General to conduct an independent outside investigation. We talked about that at the special meeting, that we weren't going to ask them to do that. We were going to ask them to review the report and should they feel like it needed further investigation, that they do that. And so that, we had, the consensus that I remember from the special meeting was that we weren't going to ask them for that. You wanted that, but then, then as the discussion unfolded and listening to all of our discussion, our legal counsel, and we even had input from the CCEA on that, and, and we all felt like we should say, it's not our investigation, it's the Inspector General's, if they feel like anything more should occur. So those are the two things that, that I take issue with. And I do, I am fine with you to say, on behalf of the school board, you signed it. So I, I would just simply, and if you want to say, I, I am requesting you appoint, that's fine, with me.
That's in the first paragraph too. It's the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Well, we did have lengthy discussion at the December 6th meeting and we did say that we would ask them to review the report and to look into further investigation.
Right.
The, the investigation is exactly what we're requesting.
Yeah.
We're requesting them to come and do an independent investigation.
No, I think what you said first is exactly accurate of the December 6th meeting, but what you're saying second and what's in this letter isn't what we were talking about asking. We were asking them to review the report and make their decision based on that. And so that's what I would be comfortable with.
Would you feel better if I changed that language to review the report?
Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute, y'all. We're nitpicking again. Okay.
I, I said, I'm not, I'm not trying to, really. I feel I'm comfortable with it. I was just trying to accurately reflect the discussion.
Okay. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we all have read the 60-odd-page report. It basically says, we didn't see anything much, that, that's about it. But, now I can't speak for the rest of you, but I know that I have gotten some phone calls from people with hands-on knowledge of things that they witnessed, saw, were a part of willingly or unwillingly. I felt like the report was, was good. I mean, I enjoyed reading it. I didn't, I felt like sometimes, my own opinion was, is that there were some people who perhaps were hesitant to say things because they were fearful for their job. And nobody wants to put their job in jeopardy. I don't have a problem at all with us sending this, you know, report and asking them to look at it. And also, if they do feel that it is deemed that further investigations needed, I certainly feel that, you know, I'd be glad to give them a couple names of people that they may want to talk to that didn't get in the 25 or whatever number it was that they had talked to before. At this point, in, for transparency, and I so want to just move forward and get back to elevating Clay, and I know y'all do too, I say, send it over there, let them look at it. If they say, look, it's gone far enough, forget it, girls and boys, you know, let's just get on with life. I can live with that and so forth, but I still feel that there is this perception out there that it's the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God, is not out there yet. And I just want to put this baby to bed and, and get it over with. So I'm all for sending the letter, let them look at it. If they deem there's nothing else, let's go on with life. And if they do see that there's something that maybe needs to be looked at a little bit further, so be it. But, you know, whether she says, you know, before, the, the former chairman was corresponding back and forth and the board didn't really know what was going on.
I agree. Please don't misunderstand.
And this way, at least, it's saying, on behalf of the board, and we're saying, hey, look at it, if you see something great, if you don't see something great, but let's just get on with it and be done with it.
Please don't misunderstand. I'm not suggesting at all that, that our employees, I, I agree with you, if employees need to be talked to, they should be talked to. I simply was just trying to accurately reflect what we had discussed there.
Would you be more comfortable if we sent this letter and just had the four of our names on it and we'll run it by Mrs. Bola and, and didn't send it from the whole board and had it, you know, Janice Carrickis, Carol Studdard, Betsy Condon, Mary Bola? Would you be more comfortable with that? I don't want you to be uncomfortable. So if this is something that you're going to have, you know...
I believe that we act as a board, truthfully. So if that's what the majority of the board wants, then that's what the majority of the board wants.
So I, I will change the language that Ms. Condon has...
Which would be what now?
Well, and actually, I, I mean, if you've, Mrs. Studdard, how do you feel about the sentence, "We, the members of the Clay County School Board are now requesting you please appoint the Office of Inspector General to conduct an independent outside investigation of the allegations brought forward"? I can change that to say, continue the investigation.
I, I would just say...
In reference to the report or something along that.
I would just like, like for their office to review our report and if they feel it is not comprehensive enough and that they need to investigate further, that we welcome that in Clay County, because I think we do.
I can live with that.
Are you, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I want it to be from us and what we want. I'm not trying to be a dictator here and say, this is what I'm doing, because we all know one board member doesn't act unilaterally. We, we only have...
Which is what I would be doing if I left my name off.
Well, if, if you felt strongly about it though, I would respect that.
No, I wouldn't do that.
But I also respect the fact that we, we duly elected you to be our chair and, and that was a unanimous vote and so...
But she, but she's not going to act.
I won't say that.
On behalf of the board, if the board's not... And so I think if you wordsmith that a little bit, you can go ahead and say it all.
If I can just interject one more thing. I haven't gotten the phone calls that you two have reported that you've gotten from employees that felt like they didn't get the opportunity to speak. I've gotten the opposite phone calls from some of our administrators and employees who feel like they've been beaten up over something that they didn't do.
And I understand that, and I think that's...
And I think that's really the feeling of wanting to move on. And, you know, when I read the report, it wasn't just they interviewed, you know, twenty-five people, they also looked at all the data, and everything that was considered a discrepancy, they went to the student files, and every, there was no abnormalities in the paperwork and the filing. So I feel like it's not fair to say that they didn't do a thorough investigation, because not only did they interview twenty-five-plus people, they also looked at the data, and the data didn't give them any reason to suspect anything. So, in my opinion, I'm happy to accept the report as is, but if there are employees, which I have not spoken to, who feel like their voice hasn't been heard, then I understand that perspective as well. So I just wanted you to understand where I'm coming from and let you know that I understand where you're coming from.
And I certainly understand some of the people feeling like they've been on the firing line, and I think the main thing is, we just need to clear it up. We need to just, you know, get...
You'd think that one investigation would be enough to clear it up.
I do also want to reiterate my comments from the special meeting, because I really do truly feel this way. I really believe, under Mr. Davis's leadership, we're not going to have any of this going forward. So I'm not, not that I'm not concerned about what could have happened in the past, or may have happened, or may not have happened, or may have been, whatever. I feel confident and comfortable, under his leadership, under your leadership, that we're going to not have a problem going forward.
I agree with that one hundred percent.
I agree with you, too. Mr. Davis, did you, would you like to add anything, or you, I mean, of course, you're not, you know?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair.
We want your opinion.
I mean, the biggest thing, I appreciate you, your problem-solving in order to create and craft a letter that really represents the entire body. I will say, and I said this before, I'm coming into the end of the movie on this from my side, so I haven't experienced it, but for me, it's two-pronged for me. I do agree there, well, three prongs. I do agree that we need to move forward, I think, because we have to, we owe this to the community, but I also think there's an accountability side as well to make sure that we are thorough. But for me, I just want to know and make sure that we're clean from a systems and processes standpoint, so that we can either fix or validate we're doing the right things or not the right things in order to move forward. So I'm more engaged to really know and better understand where we are as an organization, and what I can do if there's any incidents that we may need to be able to problem-solve within this department. So I'm eager to learn, and I stand by the board to whatever decision you make in this, because you've experienced it, and I will continue to work along both sides of it regardless of the outcome.
Thank you. Well, I will make these changes, and I'll get the letter to you tomorrow for you to send off. So since that was just a discussion, there's nothing we have to do with that. The next item on our agenda is C-3A, Legislative Priorities. I pulled this after discussing it with Ms. Cornigay. It really should not have been in the consent agenda, and she has a list of here, kind of used it as a template, you know? I think we need to get it down to probably four or five strong bullets. Mr. Davis sent us the FADS list, and Ms. Bola was very impressed with some of them. So because they're meeting on the thirtieth, from three to six, we've got time. So I've asked if we could place this on the agenda for the January 5th meeting, and if everybody goes through and look at, you know, what you do like on here or you don't. What Ms. Pivas said, let's take that into consideration and maybe add that to our priorities and look at the FADS. Just get your suggestions to Ms. Cornigay, she'll put it together, and then, at the January 5th meeting, we can say, "Okay, pick X, Y, Z," and it'll just be approved that night, so...
I know the county commission does three legislative priorities, and they've had more success.
Right.
So I feel like we might even want to narrow it further to, these are the top three things we want to see happen this legislative session.
And that's what FSBA did this year. They narrowed it down to just three, and really, you hand them a couple of pages, they're just going to toss it and look. So this is much better to just have, you know, a few bullets, so I think that's what we should do. So maybe what we should do is send Ms. Cornigay our, you know, our top four in order and let her, you know, take the, are you okay with that, Ms. Cornigay? And Mr. Davis, you know, of course, we want your input on which priorities you feel are important, too, so please, it's not just us.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so that we're going to postpone, but since that was on the consent agenda, do we need to, Mrs. Studdard, do we need to take a vote?
Was that one of the items that we had pulled?
We pulled it from the consent, so I think...
Do we need to have a motion to move this item to the January agenda?
I think we do.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll say move.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four-zero. So Ms. Bush, we're going to move this to the January 5th regular meeting, the legislative priorities.
I made the motion.
It was a motion by Ms. Gilhous and a second by Ms. Condon.
They don't recognize your voice.
I know. Is it going to come up, or are we just going to...
Yeah, there it is.
There it is.
Mine didn't come up.
Close out of that.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Human Resources Special Action A. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry.
Who voted for me? Somebody voted for me. No. Somebody voted for me. Thank you. Do we live in Chicago?
I'll move approval on Human Resources Special Action A.
I don't think we had any, did we?
We had one.
Is there one in there?
Yeah. There is one.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Condon, a second by Ms. Gilhous. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four-zero. We had two items pulled from the consent agenda, C-4, the Personnel Consent Agenda, and C-2. So we'll do C-2 first, which was the...
Could we reverse the order of that and do the Personnel Consent Agenda first?
All right. So I have one card on that. Mr. Keith Nichols.
My name's Keith Nichols, and the address is on the card. And before I get started with this, I just want to say, Rena Lee, you're absolutely right. You're not going to be common core here at the local, and it's going to take parents. And if you remember a couple months back, well, actually, last month, all he has to do is say, "We've got a busload of people," and he's got a driver. So when we're ready to go to Tallahassee, let me know, sir. What I want to bring to your point, to this, to your attention tonight, is a little point on this that I've been talking about, and, you know, Teresa kind of brought you the good feelings and everything, and I kind of got to give you the bah-humbug moment. If you look back in the Personnel Consent Agenda, you'll notice that for your support staff, you lost twenty-seven this month, and twenty of those were just straight resignations. So while, you know, it may be a new day in Clay and it's changing, we really need to stop the blood flow a lot faster than what we're doing. And I don't know any way we can do it any faster than what we're trying, but we need to make the effort. One of the things that I've heard is that, and this came from the transportation side, is there's people thinking that, you know, there's a rumor going out there that privatization, and I've tried to squash that, because I've never heard you say anything about that. So I mean, if you could come out on that, Mr. Addison, and make it, make it where people know one hundred percent what your position is on that, it might go a long way to help us with strengthening our numbers again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Through the chair. Mr. Nichols, thank you for bringing that up, and I will tell you, there is no desire to prioritize. I am dedicated to our employees, regardless of our support staff. I'm here to work side-by-side and to problem-solve with you in order to make sure we retain our staff. We've got to be clever enough to put retention strategies in place, and I think that's the foundation of culture and how we feel and interact with staff. I will tell you this, though, as you know, and through our transportation side, there are a number of routes that I'm finding to be double-backed. There are a number of routes through our, which means that I can go pick up a cohort of students, and I have to take them home, then I got to turn around and go pick up five or six more students, because either we don't have the drivers, or we haven't really been strategic about how we create the routes. I don't know which one it is, I'm going to find out, in order to make certain that we can service our kids. I do not believe our kids should be waiting for us to double-back to pick them up. I think it's not, it's not a safe environment for kids, it's not fair for kids, and it's not fair for parents as well. But I will tell you, there is some angst, because through the coaching realm, we have teams that are competing at a state and local level, that can't get enough transportation or buses in order to get them to their competition, so they're either dropping out, or they're going to have to get, go to prioritize organization to get the routes. On top of that, there's angst for field trips. So I'm going to work internally to make certain that we have enough staff to make that happen, but if we don't, we have to work collectively to figure out now what. And, but I am committed to our staff internally. I'm committed to growing our staff and retaining our staff in order to get it done with everything that we have, because my understanding, we have sufficient number of buses, we've just got to get enough people committed to doing this work and then support them in doing it.
Let's remember, we own our fleet.
That's correct. He wants to make another...
You have to go to the microphone.
Unless you have a portable mic, just kidding.
I was going to say, I can make one suggestion on that.
Yes, sir.
Maybe if you take your coaches and bring them over and let them get CDL certification, that way they could drive some of the spare buses, and that would free them up and have the time. And I mean, it may not be the ideal, you know, resolution to it, but it could be something we could think about in the short term to help us out.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
I actually believe that that has been brought up in the past, and that it was a violation of the CESP contract, so I just want to be careful that we don't.
Hey, Ms. Becky Smith's back there talking, I don't know. We better listen to what she says.
All right, so I'll...
I just want to be careful that we don't inadvertently violate our contracts.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Studdard, a second by Ms. Condon. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero. The next item is item C-2, the, what was C-2? Consent agenda, the allocation changes? Proposed allocation changes?
Allocation changes, yes, ma'am.
All right, do I have a motion for the proposed allocation changes?
I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Condon, a second by Ms. Studdard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four-zero. Okay, our next item is...
Ms. Kerkis, we've not voted electronically on the last two items.
I don't know, it keeps not coming up.
They're not up here.
Oh, okay.
She's doing it manually, because...